The Regent's meeting for September 17th, 2019 is now in session. Please rise to the legislative seat.
I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please hold on.
Alderman Julianne.
Here.
Gariga.
Hi.
Hollerin.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Moranti.
Here.
Misa.
Here.
Rosenthal.
Here.
Sarrar.
Yeah.
Volo.
Here.
Presentee Pietro.
Here.
Coram present.
A motion, I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the August 20th meeting and place them on file. Can I have an introduction? Kamal, and a second. John. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Committee reports are on your desks. Again, can I have a, an introduction and a second to place the committee reports on file? An introduction? Shoshah, and a second, Calvin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Among our communications, well, our only communication is a resignation of Elsa Duresser as a member of the Conservation Advisory Council. May I have an introduction and a second to place it on file? An introduction? Dewan, second, Kamal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Shoshah. Our list of bills. Any questions from the council?
I have a question.
Yes.
The, the last, what is the AT, the ET awards? What was that?
Those were the, what used to be called the Arts Entertainment Awards. You know, the war, the Finance Committee did a, a debt awards, you know, money for events.
And that's part of it?
Yes, it has to go over the bill here. That was the flag, we gave $2,000 for Flag Day.
That was going to Flag Day.
Right.
But this wasn't a part of the package that we put it on?
I guess they get, they get paid as they come in.
Okay, thank you.
What's Compost Data Innovation?
Compost is the vendor that's on the parking ticket bureau. It's a monthly bill.
They run the software or whatever there's in the system?
Thank you. Counsel, any more questions? Can I have a, an introduction and a second to pay the bills? John, second. Tiffany. A roll call vote please.
Alderman Julianne.
Aye.
Gariga. Aye. Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarrar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pietro.
No vote. First resolution, appointing Commissioner Deeds. May I have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Julianne.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarrar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pietro.
No vote.
Carrie.
The next resolution appoints Sydney Long to the Tourism Board and I provide you with, in supplement, a statement from Sydney. May I have a, a roll call vote please, unless there's some discussion? A roll call vote please.
Alderman Julianne.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarrar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pietro.
No vote.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a budget from Hudson City School District for reimbursement related services provided by the Hudson Police Department's School Resource Officer to the Hudson City School District.
And this is the same, I'm sorry, this is the same as before, there's nothing different, correct?
Yes. I don't think they're giving us more money. But at least they're giving us something. May I have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Julianne.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarrar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pietro.
No vote.
Carrie.
Miss Darian, a quick question. Is, is this the same officer, is it remains or is it something else?
No, it's right, you weren't here, no, it was a new officer. It's a new officer, Jake Halman.
Is he new to the force or new to this program?
Just new to the program right here. Wow, that's lovely. I love the kids' problems when they're having it. We outgrew them.
And the last of our, of our resolutions that were introduced to be informal, this is a resolution to accept a donation on behalf of the Fire Department, $100 from Pat and Irene Maloney. May I have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Julianne.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarrar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pietro.
No vote.
Carrie.
The next, um, resolution, now onto our new resolutions. This resolution was actually brought to my attention by the city clerk, Jason Bellamy, city commander. And it's a resolution waiving the fees on marriage licenses for active duty members of the armed forces. And it went through the Finance Committee tonight. And they moved it along. So first, I need an introduction and a second. Kamal, Calvin, and now roll call vote please.
Alderman Julianne.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarrar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pietro.
No vote.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes a transfer of funds within the youth department accounts. I'll need an introduction and a second, first.
Can you repeat that, which resolution?
Uh, it's number six.
Thank you.
I have an introduction, Dewan, second, Calvin. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Julianne.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarrar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pietro.
No vote.
Carrie.
The next resolution accepts a donation to the senior center. National Union Bank of Kinder in the amount of $100. May I have an introduction and a second please? Dewan, second. Ellen, second. Tiffany, roll call vote please.
Alderman Julianne.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarrar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pietro.
No vote.
Carrie.
The next resolution are intra-fund transfers from B2W Cemetery and Water, all within the budgets of those entities. May I have an introduction and a second please? Calvin, Irene, roll call vote please.
Alderman Julianne.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarrar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pietro.
No vote.
Carrie.
And lastly, this is a sort of latest addition that came to my attention today or yesterday. It's supporting the Hudson Athens Lighthouse Preservation Society's nomination to the Preservation League of New York's Seven to Save List. And attached is a, a letter that I would sign on behalf of the council, were you to approve of this proposal, this resolution.
Exactly, do they want us to do?
Just to say that we think it's a valuable place to preserve and put on a list of preservation. And I think we'd all like the Lighthouse.
And what I did add in there is I also provided that the mayor would be authorized as well so that you could have to, just to show it, you know what I mean?
Right.
Show the city's voting.
Right. So, can I have an introduction and a second? Dewan, second.
It's a bit on the list, is it?
Yeah, just to protect it, protect it.
Is it actually in the city council?
Probably not.
Yeah.
Is it actually in the city council?
It's on, it's on the side.
I'd love to know if there are any involved.
Do I have a second? Oh, Shoshah. Okay, roll call vote please.
Alderman Julianne.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarrar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pietro.
No vote.
Carrie.
And lastly, we have a proposed local law proposing a nine-month moratorium on the registration or operation of any new short-term lodging facility. As you may know, we're in the process of crafting a law that deals with short-term rentals. But in the meantime, because we want to do that correctly and with a lot of public participation, we would like to compose this moratorium while we craft that law. This doesn't affect anybody who currently has a short-term rental, only those who are going for a, to register within the next nine months.
And, yeah, if I could add, I mean, we've been talking about this in committee, but since Andy was away, we had an emergency, this, we were unable to really have this properly to be vetted in the committee, but we've discussed something wrong this last half of months and to have a moratorium in shape, would take shape rather. So, but once here, we could have a quick discussion, we have to, to vote on it here, it's been laid on our desks right now. But I think it's pretty straightforward. It does have hardship revision again, in terms of if anyone is in the process of, about to be putting an Airbnb online right now, they could come before the council and plead their hardship so they could get an exemption. I think it's pretty fair. It's not going to be affecting a wide amount of people, but I think we'll do the right thing in terms of helping us craft a good law, rather than being rushed in and crafting a law that could have a lot of problems. So, with that.
Will this be on the agenda for next?
No, with that, we're going to see if we can take the Rob rule and discuss it now, vote as if we're voting out committee here. Because I think we've basically discussed this at length amongst the legal committee in terms of what a moratorium would do versus the local law. The only reason we didn't have it this month is just because Andy was away.
But, yeah, but no one's seen this law, the public hasn't seen it.
Well, we can see, they're seeing it right now, we could discuss it, it's pretty, it's pretty fairly straightforward. So, we got to vote to keep it in committee, or we could talk about it right now and vote on it. I think it's not that complicated, so if we want a discussion, then we should have it with the full council.
So, it ends automatically, if nothing else is done, the nine months, yeah?
Yes.
It ends?
Absolutely.
I would like to see if I make a motion to go back to committee. Because, I mean, I've seen in a lot of legal committees, I don't remember.
We've talked about this element for repeatedly in lieu of doing a full bill.
Correct.
Talked about doing a moratorium. Right, well, here's one, and it's pretty straightforward, so if we can't absorb it right now. I mean, if that's, if it's the will of the council to go back to the committee, we'll go back to committee and we'll vote and have it again next month, but basically, this is...
I agree with, with the chair of the legal committee. The last legal committee was, you know, we had basic questions, repeated questions from the public. We did the best that we can answer from what the city attorney already informed us. He wrote this up. I mean, we have all the concerns are being addressed. I know we have a motion on the floor, so there's a second, you know, but there's no second to it. But if anyone else...
I'll second the motion to go back to committee.
So, let's vote on that. Before we vote, I'll just say that, again, there's nothing in here that is complicated. It's a nine-month moratorium that we've talked about within the legal committee and taking input from the public about their feelings about rushing ahead with the wrong type of bill. So, in lieu of that, if you want to wait till next month to vote on this, absolutely favorable. It's a pretty simple thing to do if we decide to vote on it right now. So, entertaining, entertaining dominates motion.
Yeah, I think we need the public actually look at this.
There'll be a lot of stages here. There's a lot of stages, this isn't just happening. Well, right, there's going to be a public hearing, and then the mayor will have a hearing. There'll be a lot of stages involved.
There's a county as well.
Absolutely.
Well, that's the next motion, actually. So, there's a motion on the table. Let's...
He's done, Nick, and then Rich second.
Let's have a roll call vote, I guess.
And that is, just to be clear, to refer it back to legal. Alderman Julianne.
I'm sorry.
This is the, refer it back to legal, Rob.
We have a motion on the floor from Alderman Moranti.
To, to refer it back, I think, aye.
Gariga.
No.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Nay.
Lewis.
Nay.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misa.
No.
Rosenthal.
No.
Sarrar.
No.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pietro.
Aye, no. Okay, so we're going forward with this. First, I need an introduction and second. Tiffany and Shoshah, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
This is, this is a simple majority to refer it back?
Of course.
Two-thirds?
Why would it need two-thirds?
Yeah. No, your motion to send it...
To keep it on, okay, that's what I'm thinking back.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a motion, I need introduction and second, I got that. And now I need a motion and a second to lay the proposed local law on the Alderman's desk. Tiffany, second. John. And now, may I have a motion and a second to refer the proposed local law to the Columbia County Planning Board for their recommendation. Try the introduction? John, second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. So, as again, I mean, for those who are not in favor, I remind you, this still has a long way to go. There'll be plenty of public comment opportunities. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, we certainly, I'm expecting we will be talking about it at the legal committee.
It's ongoing, it's been ongoing now for, yeah, a month.
With the council's authorization, we will send it to county planning. They will not receive it until next month because they're actually meeting right now. So, we'll be on the agenda for October. And, again, we'll have that response, you know, after your October meeting. And this would be a position that would be considered by the council.
After you said it, does the council have any new business?
Do we, could you clarify on inspection day, where's the date? Do you have a campaign for?
Fire inspection?
Yeah.
I do, just to tell you the fact.
At 6:00 PM, the fire inspection begins at the Warren Street House and then moves to the Central Station.
And that's the 27th?
I'm sorry, on Friday, the 27th. On Saturday, the 28th, at 2:00 PM, the fire parade begins at 2:00 PM, and we are invited to review here at City Hall.
Right. And that's the, that was the trailer we did last year, right?
Yes, correct.
What time is it? Saturday morning?
2:00 PM. Counsel, am I any other questions? Or issues you'd like to raise? The public? Anything we'd like to discuss? No gains?
Would this be the forum to talk about the county bus line?
Unfortunately not. We're not, you know, we're, we're just the city, and the county bus line is termed a county, and that's usually a 401. And the person from Hudson, you most want to talk to, I believe, is Michael Chmides, if you're, that's the fourth ward supervisor? Sorry, third ward supervisor.
I'm in there, I don't know anything about the ward, so I'm just...
Oh, okay.
I'm in Louisiana.
The fourth ward supervisor.
I'm right here, you tell me, I'll deliver the message. Oh, well, people want going riding time on the bus. Instead of 2:00, right? Instead of 2:00, yes. And maybe go a little further. I'll deliver that message. Okay. Well, I work with Mike Johnston, so. Is he ready to go further? Yes, he is. All right, there we go.
So...
I'm the fourth ward.
I thought you said Linda Busman's the fourth ward supervisor, then?
Don't worry about it. It's all Hudson community. I, you're right, you're right.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I think she has a good point.
Yeah.
Because the, this is not a county issue, this is a Hudson issue.
Right.
The fact is that the bus service stops at 2:00, which is pretty crazy. So, we need a longer time for people to get to the grocery store, get to jobs, et cetera, et cetera. So, you're right to bring it here because Hudson uses the bus to go shopping. To go shopping, do things, go to work, go to work. Hospital. Yes.
Can I ask you, what part of the city you live?
I live in Hudson.
I don't even know, it's like, what street?
I live on Washington.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, that's...
It's Hudson to me.
Fourth.
I don't know nothing about, like I said, wards and all that.
Depending on what side you're on.
Yeah, depending on what side of Washington.
On Parker Book Factory side.
On the what?
Where the Parker Book Factory is, I live on that side.
That's wonderful.
Well, what I suggest is you contact your Alderman.
Yes.
And maybe they can put together a resolution that we would send to the county requesting them to act on this expansion of the bus system.
And also, they have a meeting, usually at 9:00, the county has a transportation meeting. You can look on the website to see when their county meeting for transportation, intend that meeting. That's open to the public.
Tiffany, if you want to.
That's what I was raising my hand to say. We have different committees on the city council, and one of them is the Housing and Transportation. We just had one in the beginning of the month, their monthly meeting, you're more than welcome to attend.
Did that happen over the first month?
Yes.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that you can't reach out to any one of us that's on the committee and give us your concerns, issues and so forth, and we can reach out to supervisor committees as well to attend the meetings.
Okay. Thank you very much. Your fourth ward, four members, John and Rich, who are sitting...
Hi.
How are you doing? Houston? Hi, Doc. Okay, thank you. The next housing and transportation meeting is October 2nd. Okay. Every time? 6:45. And it's in this building or 401? In this building.
Sure.
Okay.
At 6:45.
I was at a meeting last week with Supervisor Chmides and Kai Wyman from Kite's Nest, and Bob Gibson from DSS, Commissioner of DSS, who is in the process of applying for more funding to expand the bus network. He's doing a lot of work right now to expand the youth components of it, which take all the different after-school youth services home to different areas, and ran our summer camp for us. And they're using that as a template for what, what they hope to be more ridership for adults afterwards. And they, Commissioner Gibson is really excited to get more ridership. If he has citizens telling him that there's going to be more people coming at this day or that day, at this time going to that place, he's ready to, to push it as much as he can from his perspective. And so now is the time for anybody who, who wants expanded ridership to talk about that and organize and get more, get the word out there, because now they're applying for that funding and in the...
Oh, good.
Spring of next year, they'll be able to hopefully integrate that into more buses, more routes, more times.
Yeah. It's the city, municipal, bus company. Like I said, I work with him, but I will be telling him to get ready. Because I've been trying to get it done since I moved here, and that was four years ago, and now I got a foot in, I can do something. And I, now we can get it done.
Thank you.
I got some other things, but I don't think this is the place to do it, in the city. Speak up. Oh, okay, no, I have no problem with that. Oh, speak up. Well, y'all might not think it's important, but...
Everything you have to say.
Okay, cool.
Do you mind if I say your name?
My name is Janice Beckles. Janice Beckles. I live on Washington Street.
Thank you.
Okay. And a city pool for the children, for the adults, where they could go, be safe, have fun. Because in the summertime, everyone doesn't have a pool in their backyard, or they let their children use oak deck. And I've been scouting places for that. And I just need to know how I go about getting funding for it.
I would like to know the truth.
Okay. I've been trying, I've been to, I've been to Mr. Barrett's, talked to...
You know, a few years ago, there were some children down in the second ward, and they started a petition on the very same subject, and they received over 200 signatures. So, there is a huge want for a swimming pool for the public.
Yes.
So, I don't think, and I'm not going to assume for everyone, but I know there's members on the council that agree with you, you know, and the problem is, we need a location and the, and the money, so.
I haven't tried any of that, too. I've been here four years.
If you know that, if you know that the school doesn't open during, at least during a year.
Yeah, but anybody doesn't know that.
Well...
And the thing with the school, they open weird hours, like they either open very early in the morning, you know, and it's, it's only a certain, a certain time, it's not like, you know, from 10 to 4:00 PM where it's just open to the public.
You know, they have more things for, not just for kids to do, but this is a city, right? Okay, I come from Queens, so. And for, for adults to do, too. I mean, I love my children, but I sure love being an adult, too. And there's still some things I like to do as, not just go home and sit home all day, but I, that's just me. Okay, but I think for the kids, someplace like that, a swimming area, that they could go and have fun, families can go and picnic and things like that. But I'll be talking to, I guess, Ms. Tiffany, and she'll...
And then it is the Rock Theater.
Are those two gentlemen right there?
Always talking to you.
Yes, I love talking to you.
Wait, 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 you said you're on the same mark as Parker Book or Paul?
Yes, I'm on the same side as Parker.
I think that's five folks. Depends on how far up it is.
You think that's more?[1789.82] You think that's more?
No.
Some of the, even if, even if.
Because we all want to benefit from many things that we all looking for, so I don't, like I said, I don't.
A pool is on a lot of our minds.
Cool, I've got locations.
As with most things, it's a matter of funding and getting the property in. But it's not out of the question. There's all kinds of development, roads rolling around and maybe one of them could use to have a pool.
Okay.
So.
Can you bring outside, excuse me?
No, go ahead.
Can you bring like outside developers or do you have to work within the Hudson area? Using.
You can bring outside developers, they can speak with the council, we will ask some questions and see if they are right fit to work with the city depending on what it is and what they're asking for price-wise.
One non-profit group you might want to look up on the internet, it's called Friends of Hudson Youth. And we may help you in your search to create a pool. Or brand.
I've been trying to talk to local folks that can help raise money. Well, I have the money to donate a few. Tell y'all, give you a million each, be good.
Ray, could you want to?
I was going to, I think, after Paul, what you were speaking about, when's the JLE meeting?
I haven't heard about, I wrote to them yesterday to the architect. I'm waiting to hear on both of the studies that are supposed to be due.
But there's not a meeting scheduled for that?
There is not until I hear back from them. Because they have, the next meeting is where they're going to propose what they've come up with. So it's all in their court right now. Supposed to. The original date was September 17th and obviously they're not going to make that date. And the original final project day, final deliverable day is the 27th. I don't know what the deliverables were on their ADA study, but that hasn't come in either. And that was earlier, so.
I would just imagine that would be a good time, that would be another venue to bring up the pool. Because at the last meeting, a couple other people brought up the pool there, so.
Well, I've been trying to push it for like two years now. You see what we could do?
Anyone else?
Joy, what is the new metal object outside from our city hall?
It's a mysterious object that has appeared in our midst. It may be from an alien culture, I'm not sure. It's, no, it's apparently an effort to satisfy an ADA requirement to contact, to have the ability to contact someone in the building in case someone with a handicap wants you to come out. It doesn't really help anybody get in. It just lets know, the clerks, lets the clerks know that there's someone out there. Oh, one more time, one more time. I'm sorry, what?
Does that mean that is a first step of the city trying to do something handicap accessible?
If it is, it's a very inadequate step, I would think, but that's.
And who did that?
I still don't know.
I saw that today, I was wondering.
It's not finished, though, because there's a little string there and I can't imagine that's, unless it's a factory belt or something.
Trace his guess.
Anything else? Yes, Claudia.
Speaking of strings, what is that string in front of you? Mine might help and I don't want to get it so coughing fit here.
I guess the city is exempt from historical preservation rules too, huh? Is it? It is?
Because it comes to ADA you're talking about?
I'm sorry, what?
If it's an ADA standard.
All right. Yes, Mr. Merdine.
Can you get an exception to put an entrance on this site where you have that alleyway?
Doesn't work.
It won't work.
That's one of the things the ADA study is looking at. I'm not sure what they came up with. There was one proposal where they would recess the door. I mean, there's a possibility. We'll see when they bring them to study, it hasn't come in yet. But they did a very, they have, I've seen some of the progress along the way. They're trying to, they assess the entire building. Because remember, to completely ADA acceptable, they have to get people upstairs. And that's where the big cost would come in. The rough estimate I'd heard is over $3 million to make this building. So, anything else?
No, she told Jerry.
Second? Oh.
Can I add something relatively to that? Part of the ADA study for City Hall, they have three proposed, four proposals that we will be showing next week to everyone. And it goes from $135,000 up to $3 million to do the whole building. So for $135,000, we can make the ground floor.
So they have submitted the final thing to do?
Are we having a special meeting on this?
Sure, the easiest way to get the information to you, we'll probably give you copies of everything. But it's all part of a package that's part of the John L. Edwards, putting everything together, evaluating all the possibilities for the city of Hudson.
All possibilities for accessibility?
Yeah, you can make City Hall ADA, take your John L. Edwards. So you all will have an arsenal of information, what's the best move for the city of Hudson to go forward in the future.
Are you going to give us copies of it or we have to attend the meeting again?
Sorry?
Are you going to give us the council copies of this information or?
Okay. Second? Alderman, second?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?